Councilmember Toby Gilly has our prayer and pledge this evening. Mr. Gilly.
Thank you, Mayor. If you bow with me, please. Dear God, our most loving heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this wonderful day with which you blessed us and this wonderful city in which we live. Father, we thank you tonight for all the servicemen and women of all the branches of our military and our local law enforcement and fire department that worked to protect us, and we ask your blessing on them. Father, tonight, as we come before you in this setting to make decisions for our city, give us your guidance and your wisdom. It's in your son's name, Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council, March 27, 2014. And before we start our agenda, I want to point out that April is Fair Housing Month, and we will have a presentation ceremony next week, because next week starts April. But it's been forty-six years, I believe, maybe forty-eight, since 1968, forty-six years, I was right, since the beginning of the U.S. Congress passed the Civil Rights Act of 1968, which guarantees the rights of individual to equal housing opportunity. We're very proud of that. I think we can see the results of that across our country, and certainly across our community. And we're very proud to point out that this will be Fair Housing Month coming up in April. And we look forward to celebrations and making sure that fair housing certainly is the rule in our community. I would ask if you would look at your consent agenda, council members, there may be some questions regarding any of those items on the consent agenda, and if you have questions, now would be a good time to bring those up. And if there are none, I certainly would accept a motion that we accept our consent agenda as it is presented.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Gilly, Vice Mayor Washington, please call the role Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
And Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Oh, sorry. You weren't here when I filled this out. I didn't go back and change it.
Didn't recognize you.
I had already retired you, Mayor.
How soon we forget.
I was told you weren't going to be here tonight. I didn't have you on my sheet. I apologize.
Oh, really? Well, rumors of my demise have been overstated. March the 13th, 2014, we had a regular meeting, and you have the minutes of those meetings before you. If you have had a chance to review those, are there any additions or deletions to the minutes of that March 13th meeting? If not, is there a motion to accept the minutes as they are presented?
So moved.
Second motion.
Thank you. Mr. Young and Mr. Gilly, please call the role Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, on second reading, we'll consider for passage an ordinance to rezone an area located along New Salem Highway to Highway Commercial, CH District, and Residential Multi-Family 16, RM 16 District.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gilly, Mr. Washington, thank you. Please call the role.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for renewal a certificate of compliance for Zheng Kang Zhang at Longhorn Liquor, 223 Northwest Broad Street. Ms. Wright.
Mayor Bragg, this is a two-year requirement by the Save Tennessee, and this owner is already in existence, and his application met our recommendations for approval.
Excellent. Is there a motion that we renew?
So moved. Second motion.
Mr. Young, Mr. Gilly, thank you. Please call the role Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Mr. Zhang, you have your renewal. This time, we'll consider renewal of a certificate of compliance for Benjamin F. Haddon at Top Shelf Liquors, 2122-D, North Thompson Lane. Ms. Wright, again.
Mayor Bragg, as with the previous item, this application is a renewal for an existing business, and they have also met our requirements.
All right, they've met all requirements. Is there a motion that we renew?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gilly, Mr. Young, thank you. Please call the role Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Planning Commission to schedule a public hearing to consider McKnight Park Redevelopments Master Plan. Ms. Green, welcome.
Thank you, sir. It is during its regular meeting on March 19, 2014, the Planning Commission considered the adoption of a master plan amendment for the McKnight Park Redevelopment Master Plan, and also held a public hearing. At that public hearing, the Planning Commission did vote to adopt the plan as presented. The Murfreesboro Parks and Recreation Commission has also considered and also recommends the approval of the McKnight Park Redevelopment Master Plan. Is the recommendation of Planning Commission staff that you schedule a public hearing to consider the adoption of this master plan amendment? If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Otherwise, we would request that you schedule a public hearing.
Are there any questions before I ask if we can set a public hearing? If not, Ms. McGannon, when would you like to set a public hearing?
May 1st.
May the 1st. All right. Councilmembers, on May 1st, meet with your approval. Mr. Young?
I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Mr. McFarland, thank you. Please call the role.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the city engineer. It's just so hard to say these two words together. Change order number two to a contract for construction of improvements to Joby Jackson Parkway from I-24 to US-231, and change order number three to the contract for construction of improvements to Joby Jackson Parkway from I-24 to US-231. Mr. Griffith, I think, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, and members of the council. Do have on the agenda tonight two change orders. If you're a member of the council, approve the construction of improvements to Joby Jackson from I-24 to Church Street during the meeting in March of 2013. The project will provide an alternate access from the southern portion of the city and county to the east and I-24. The project will include improvements to about a one-mile section of existing Joby Jackson Parkway, which is formerly known, portions of it, as County Farm Road, and extending to church, extending from Church Street to the east to the CSX Railroad. The improvements will then include a new, almost 1,300-foot-long bridge over the CSX Railroad and the Stones River, and the project will then continue on to the interchange at I-24. Include a site map for you to use. Highways Incorporated of Brentwood, Tennessee, was awarded that project, and I'm happy to say it's currently about six months ahead of schedule. The steel reinforcement that's being placed in the bridge deck is currently being placed in the bridge deck. During the placement of the steel, it became apparent that the layer or mat of steel that is required for reinforcement in the bridge deck was inadvertently omitted from the final bid quantities. It was actually included in the design, but just shorted in the quantity amount. In all, about 253,000 pounds of steel was included in the design and was not incorporated in the final quantities. Highways is proposing to place the additional epoxy-coated steel at the current contract unit price of 78 cents per pound, or an estimated $197,305.68. If you remember, this project has been funded through our 2010-through-2014 capital improvement plan with the city and Rutherford County splitting the cost after TDOT's initial contribution of $2 million. And as I mentioned, the city's portion of it's been funded from the TML loan. The total project cost will be increased to a total of $11,558,64.76. Staff recommends approval of the change order with the city's portion coming from the TML loan, and no additional time is being recommended to be added to the completion date. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions regarding this change order number two for Mr. Griffith?
Mr. Griffith, they just missed it?
They just missed it whenever they're calculating the quantities. It's, I don't know if you ever looked at a set of bridge plans, but it is pretty confusing, and it was just a complete mat that was missed by the technician that actually was adding the quantities together.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, is this cost plus profit, or is this, is there, you know, when I miss one, I pay for it?
It is a...
Out of my pocket.
Yeah, I understand. It's a unit price bid, so it's, our quantities are considered estimates until you actually get into the construction phase of it. So we, I guess, to answer your question, we do a unit price contract with estimated quantities. So it's very rare the quantities come up the same as what's in the actual bid documents, but it is also rare that they miss it by this much. I mean, it was a full mat of steel that was omitted from the plans, or omitted from the final quantities. It is in the plans, designed as it should be.
Mr. McFarland?
Did we go back and reconcile this against the other people who bid for the job to see if they had caught this, and then what this would have done as far as low bid?
Sure, we actually did, and Highways' unit price was the lowest of all the bidders for the cost of the steel, at 78 cents. Most of them were around, anywhere from 80 cents to a dollar, so they would have, they typically wouldn't take their own takeoff on something like that. They would go with the engineer's estimate. But we did go back, because you do have the opportunity to adjust the unit price, but we felt like since they were substantially lower than the other bidders, that this price was in order.
So I guess what my question is, if you were to add the $197,000 back to their bid, where would they be in line to where the other people who had bid on the project?
All the other ones would have increased, actually, by more, a higher percentage, because their bid price was higher, and so they would have still came in first. And I think even, I can't remember the exact bid quantities, but they won, it was about $200,000. Most of the bids were over $11 million, so I think they would have still been the low bidder.
So what you're saying is all the people did bid on the same package?
Exactly.
And they had omitted the layer of steel as well?
Exactly, Mr. Smotherman.
Okay.
And if I understand correctly, they would have got it anyway. They were substantially lower than the other bids, so even with this addition, they would have still gotten the contract.
All of them would have increased, but they beat, and I'm going by memory, but I remember they beat most of the bidders by a substantial amount.
Any other questions?
Chris, just to be clear, everyone who bid it on this, this mat was left out of all of those bids because of the specs that were provided to them?
Yes, exactly.
So it's not a matter of one particular bidder missing this mat, and the others bidding it, and then this causing them to beat a little bit because of that? I think that's the point that both you two were giving collectively. Is that correct?
You're exactly right, Mr. Gilly. The actual quantity that everyone bid on was 839,027 pounds of steel. That quantity was bid on by everybody on the project, and this increases that quantity by about 253,000.
So actually, given the unit pricing difference between them and even the next little bidder, the disparity between their bid being lower than the next little bidder is going to increase because of the difference in the unit pricing?
Exactly. You're exactly right.
Other questions or comments?
It's not that they just take kids.
All right, you have this change order number two before you. Are there any other questions? Then is there a motion to accept?
Mayor, before I make a motion, I'd like to ask one more question.
Please, Mr. Young.
Are we really six months ahead of schedule on that project?
At least.
Move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gilly. Please call the role.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
And I would say, even though we're six months ahead of schedule, we're pushing as hard as we can, because it's, the project's been under construction for about a year now, but I don't know if you guys have been able to go by and see it. It's a substantial impact to that neighborhood, so we're doing everything possible to complete that project as quick as we can, because it's a lot of work going on in a residential area, and we certainly want to get through as quick as possible.
It's not very often you build a bridge over a railroad and a river at the same time.
It's not. I'm sure that it's the longest bridge in the city, and I believe it'll probably be the longest bridge in Rutherford County whenever we're completed with it.
1,300 feet.
Quarter of a mile. That's a long way.
Big span.
Yeah.
All right, change order number three, then.
Change order number three is, and I did these separately, because the first change order, because of the size of it, we actually have to submit to TDOT for their consideration also. Normally, I would add these together, so I appreciate your indulgence on this. Basically, the second change order just includes cutting off about 303 linear feet of 10-inch steel pile that was cut off during the construction process, during the foundation of the bridge, and it's for a unit price of $17.97 per foot, or a total of $5,445.9. And it will increase the, you know, increase the total contract by that amount to $11,61,309.79. Once again, after TDOT's initial $2 million contribution to this project, us and the county will split that in half. We recommend approval of change order number three, and I think I have to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Griffith regarding change order number three?
No questions, Mayor. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Gilly, Mr. Young, thank you. Please call the role Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. This time, we'll hear from the deputy building and codes director regarding a resolution to consider for adoption, adopting a schedule of fees for permits issued by the City of Murfreesboro Building and Codes Department, and also another resolution to be adopted, adopting a City of Murfreesboro Building and Codes Department permit refund policy. Mr. Holtz, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, and councilmembers. We adopted codes a few months ago. Part of those codes included provisions for a fee schedule to be adopted by resolution. That's what we're bringing for you tonight. All fees will remain the same, with the exception of the grading permit fees and the commercial demolition permit fees. The grading permit fees I'm referring to have to do with a mass grading permit. Normally, those permits are issued when there's not a building associated with the grading. Those fees are being doubled. The fees we're using now come out of the 1975 standard excavation code and have not been changed in almost around 40 years. The commercial building demolition permit fee is being changed from a flat $75 to a fee based on the cost of the demolition. It'll be figured at half the cost for the demolition and figured as a regular building permit fee. And the refund policy is a policy we've been using for quite some time. We felt we just needed to include it in the resolution for y'all's review and approval.
All right, any questions for Mr. Holtz?
One question, Mayor.
Mr. Young.
Have, you did have some dialogue with the grading, excavating contractor community?
These, we issue maybe one or two of these a year, so there's not that many to really, you know, to impact. But like I say, these fees have not been amended for, you know, close to 40 years.
Mr. McFarland?
Normally, these grading permits, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Mr. Holtz, the city will issue these to maybe help a project get along, and there's a lot of work that goes into these permits, probably more than just getting a regular permit ready. So, I mean, I think this is a fair number, and then I'm going to say something else on this, that the lady who issues these permits, Ms. Qualls, does a phenomenal job for the city, and her husband, they have brought hospice in for her husband, just saw her today, and Ms. Qualls is still working and doing her job. So she does a phenomenal job. Thank you.
I'll let her have it.
Other questions regarding this first resolution?
With that, I'll move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. McFarland. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Washington, seconds. Please call the role.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. And while Mr. Holtz is standing there, we'll hear from him again regarding an ordinance to be passed on first reading amending chapters seven and 11 pertaining respectively to the 2012 International Residential Code and the 2008 National Electrical Code, previously adopted and amended by the Murfreesboro City Council on ordinance in a previous ordinance. There you go, Mr. Holtz.
Yes, sir. We, in conversation with contractors, as far as installing a backwater valve goes, they felt that maybe we should provide an option on how to connect these. Presently, the code just says only those that could overflow into the house be connected. We've revised it so all plumbing fixtures could go through the backwater valve. The second item is just correcting a couple of typos we had and referencing which National Electric Code we are adopting.
All right, any questions for Mr. Holtz regarding this ordinance on first reading? If not, is there a motion to pass on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gilly and Mr. McFarland. Please call the role Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider recommendations. Thank you, Mr. Holtz.
Mayor, well, the next, Mr. Gore is coming forward. I did want to brag a little bit on Mr. Whitaker and Mr. Holtz. We told you at the time we presented these code changes that the Building and Codes Department had a number of sessions to the stakeholders, to have them provide some input and guidance as we began to bring those ordinances forward. Since you've adopted that, they've continued that outreach and held a number of training sessions. They've been extremely well attended. In fact, they've been so well attended, they've added another one on Monday, April the 7th, at 3:00 PM, so that contractors can come in and hear about the new changes. So we're trying to be very proactive in making sure everybody knows what these codes are, and we all appreciate their outreach.
Thank you. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Water and Sewer Board with regards to the FY 2015 anticipated rate design and task order number eight with Weston Engineering for AMI procurement. Welcome, Mr. Gore.
Mayor Bragg, councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity this evening. I've already been forewarned by my colleagues that if I take longer than the entirety of the rest of the agenda, that there are going to be some socks and soap in my future. So I am going to move forward as briskly as possible while trying to maintain some level of understanding here. So you do have the PowerPoint on your iPads in the PDF format, so hopefully you'll be able to follow along there or on the screen, however you choose. The first slide that I've got for you today is really, it's kind of the need. We have completed a cost of service for fiscal year 2013. As part of that cost of service, we also developed a pro forma for FY 18. That pro forma shows us a revenue deficit between those five years of 1.9 million of water and 5.76 million in sewer, for a total of 7.6 million. That 5.76 million in sewer, about 3.5 million of that is the new debt service that we've talked about. If you look at, we've got a trailblaze model. It's a financial modeling package that we have input our previous 10 years' worth of operating expenses, our debt service plan, or our capital improvements plan and the associated debt service, our capital expenditures that we've historically purchased. And you can see on the red line, that's what our excess deficit trend looks like if we maintained our current rates. So you can see around, well, I'll put up here a slide. This shows our cash flow for the new debt service that's coming up. So you can kind of see, as that new debt service comes online, that's where you see the two big stair steps that get us down into a negative condition. So the need is, we've got a $7.6 million deficit to make up over the next five years. If we do nothing, we're going to go into a deficit trend. So what would we do normally to make up for that? Normally, we would raise the minimum bill, and this is a bill design or a rate design that basically shows about $10.04 that would be necessary over the next five years to make up that $7.6 million gap. The first line, the FY 14, is shaded, because that is basically our current rate design, which is about a $3.04 increase. So you can see that really it's about a $7.00 increase over the next four years would be necessary. Notice, I say with no AMI revenue. We're getting into a situation with our AMI that it moves the needle, so to speak, on the rate design, in a good way. Going back to AMI, this is the way we currently do it, handheld meters, manual process. The AMI, or the advanced metering infrastructure, is a system that would make all of our water meters wireless, radio reads. Basically, they would go to data collectors. There would be a backhaul system, and that data would be brought into our customer information system. What that would allow for is basically real-time hourly readings to see if we, if there was any water theft occurring, if there was leaks that residents did not know about. We would have early leak notification abilities. Soft turn-ons and turn-offs basically would be if someone moved out, and instead of sending a person out there to get a final reading, we could ping that meter and get the reading wirelessly. So there's some benefits. And this is really step five. If you remember, I know I come back quite routinely with our information technology master plan. We've talked about our new utility billing software, our interactive voice response, our mobility workforce management system, and this is kind of the culmination of that IT master plan dealing with the customer service excellence. So what are the core goals and benefits of the AMI system? Well, it's to enhance customer service through proactive engagement, namely early leak notifications. It's to transform a manual meter-reading business operation by eliminating the routine tasks and reassigning existing personnel to elevated function, so there's some employee development aspect to it, confront real water loss, and come into full observance of industry metrics on conservation. And lastly, the core goal is to have customers pay their fair share. Otherwise, inaccuracy in current meters have to be subsidized by all ratepayers. namely, early leak notifications. It's to transform a manual meter reading business operation by eliminating the routine task and reassigning existing personnel to elevated function. So, there's some employee development aspect to it. Confront real water loss and come into full observance of industry metrics on conservation. And lastly, the core goal is to have customers pay their fair share. Otherwise, inaccuracy in current meters have to be subsidized by all ratepayers. And that last bullet there is basically where we're going to bring into the balance and show you how all these interplay. So, we've got our rates, we've got the reserve balance that the city, the Enterprise Fund of the Water and Sewer, and we've got this AMI payback. I'm going to give you a real quick quiz on what apparent and real water loss is, or not a quiz rather, but just an overview.
That was close.
I was going to say quiz, sorry. The socks and the soap will come out quicker if I go quiz. But this is an important, this is an important element, this is an important element to really understand. We currently have about 24% water loss per year. It's 926 million gallons. That's not where we want to be. Real water losses are primarily leakage. That's leakage on the mains, leakage within the system. That's 18% of the, of the total is leakage. So, that's about a half a million dollars if you apply a wholesale rate to that water loss. That's about a half a million dollars that we're, or actually, it's about a million dollars that we're losing annually. What we are accounting for in the AMI system is that we are going to reduce that leakage by 50% and, and basically recover about a half a million dollars annually. Now, this is applied as a sinking fund because you've got to put money into fixing the leaks to get that money, that cost savings, out of the system. So, this is not applied to the business plan. This is not applied to, we're not using this money to show a payback for our system. Some people show that as, as a value to, to get back in an internal rate of return, but we're not using that. The apparent losses are what we're using exclusively to show a payback on this system. That's 6%, basically, as we're saying is through apparent losses, and that is primarily categorized as stopped and inaccuracy in meters. When you apply the retail rate, or our current rate of water, and you apply the sewer component to that as well, that's a $2.1 million annual enhanced revenue. We're assuming we're going to get five points of increased accuracy on our small meters and eight points of increased accuracy on our large meters. Enhanced revenue, what does that mean? Well, I've said it certain ways. We want to reinstate revenue equity amongst our, our customers. And another way to say that is we want everybody to pay their fair share. There are certain meters out there that may be registering only 80% of the water that's consumed into that household. Obviously, that particular customer is receiving the benefit. That particular customer has to be subsidized by people who are getting 100% accurate meters. That goes into my first rate design, where it was the $7 over the next four years to cover those inaccuracies. We put new meters in the ground, we regain that accuracy, people start paying their fair share. So, that's, that's, that's real dollars that we receive that go to pay this system back. So, I wanted to kind of go through that, just so you understand where we're, we're saying the money's going to come from for this return on investment. And this is the summary. This is a 15-year internal rate of return, return on investment business case. There's about an 8.7, it's 8.55 million here, that will have to be outlaid over a two-year period. If you look at that 2.1 million recovery over the next 15 years, it's about 19.8. There's roughly $400,000 in operation and maintenance expense. So, it's a six-and-a-quarter-year payback period with an internal rate of return of 19%. That's really, really good, for those of you in, in the, the business community, in the finance community. What we are proposing to do, however, is not to fully repay the system back in six-and-a-quarter years. If you look at this line that says designated for operating expenses to offset rates, that $1.86 million, we are talking about taking that money from the enhanced revenue from FY 16 through FY 18, putting that into the operating accounts to pay for expenses. So, that means we take, it, what it does is extends the payback, and that internal rate of return goes to 16% instead of 19%, but it basically dampens the effect of a rate increase. And you can see for FY 16, we're only assuming 20% would go from, for enhanced revenue, 50% and 70%. FY 19, we would assume a full 100% recovery of that 2.1 million. This is the cash flow analysis. Basically, you can see that it's a deficit until around that six-and-a-quarter year, and that 19%. If we go in and we, again, shed that load to, so much to reserves for payback and so much to rates to offset rate increases, it changes, it changes it a little bit. It moves that to a seven-and-three-quarter year payback period and a 15.9% internal rate of return. So, that's the effect that it has on the payback. So, what does that do for the rate design? Instead of the $7 per month per customer over a four-year period, that can actually reduce that to $2 per month, over the four years, $2 per month over a four-year period, effectively 50 cents per month per residential customer. So, seven down to two. So, it has a pretty big impact on, excuse me, on the rate, rate design. Again, understanding that FY 14 is what we're currently, the rate design we're under. Part of the FY 15 rate design also is to take into account larger meters. There's a certain minimum allowance that we have for larger meters. We are talking about reducing that by 25%. We reduced that 20% last year, and on a five-year plan, this year it would be 25% cut, next year would be 33%, next year would be 50% to get that minimum allowance down to zero. They pay a minimum monthly bill, and there's a certain amount of water that's covered under that, that monthly payment. We're talking about taking that, that minimum allowance down to zero over the next four years. We started this last year, so we're into year two of year five, or five years. One, one inch and larger, there's, yes, sir, there's, there's 1,464 customers with one inch and larger, and that's about 3.6% of our system. So, 96.4% is residential, the 5/8ths, the 50 cents per month.
That's impressive.
All right. So, this is kind of a breakdown by source for FY 15. It shows you where we would look at the sewer by raising the minimum bill, the 50 cents, where we would also get the, the effect on the water revenue for, for the larger meters. We do factor in new growth, about 600 homes annually. We would assume that's what we're going to tap into the system. That's about a 275,000. We've got $0 for water growth and $0 for AMI FY 15. The AMI enhanced revenue doesn't come into play until FY 16. The new rate design would basically maintain our affordability index. We look at 4% of the average median income. It's very, well, actually, the very low income, which I believe is 30% of the annual median income. We, we are below that 4% for upwards of a five-person family. Also, we look at our projected versus our secured capital reserves. By making that $8.7 million outlay over a two-year period, we don't project violating our secured minimum balance of 18.9 million, which is a 12-month operating secured reserve. So, what does all that mean? We're asking for the next step, which is to approve the task order with Weston Engineering to develop the procurement request for competitive seal proposals for the AMI system. The $8.7 million is basically a good estimate that we've developed, but we want to put that out on the street and have the, all the vendors come in and, that are interested in this project for the city, provide us their proposal. And then we would go through the evaluation process, which would be a, a functions and qualifications-based proposal that would be married up with a cost, and those would be weighted accordingly. And, but this next task order with Weston is $133,000 to go through the, to develop the request for competitive seal proposals and to select a vendor. So, we will be back in front of you again with a final proposal and your, requesting your approval to move forward with this. No formal recommendation is, is associated with the rate design at this function, but I wanted to introduce it to you because it will be coming forward when we develop our, our final budget or our preliminary budget and ask for the associated rate increase. So, I'm available for questions. I know that was longer than.
Yeah, I see socks and soap being passed out in the back.
I don't know if I could talk much faster.
Other questions or comments for Mr. Gore?
Darren, I realize this is a huge undertaking, but what we're talking about is $133,000 just to get to the process to figure out which vendor we're going to use for this system.
Yes, and, and I will say this, that we're going to be coming forward with, with the anticipation that you will approve it because we're asking for 50, we're going to be asking for 50% on the minimum bill. If for some reason it's not approved at the end of the year or beginning of next year, when we finally get this, we will have to come back and readjust the rate design. But I feel confident in a 19, 16% to 19% internal rate of return in the enhanced revenue, that it's, it's a slam dunk. Did that answer your question?
It does.
Okay.
One more question. The enhanced system not only will be working up in full service by 18, but it will continue on for many years.
Yes, sir.
Saving money.
We've got.
So, it's a long-term savings, not just, you're just projecting it out to 18, but it's going to be a long-term savings.
Right. We're projecting it out because our pro forma only goes, only extends to FY 18. So, obviously, we get a cost of service done by every two years, and so we'll be updating, we'll be updating our cost of service, our pro forma, and we'll be keeping track of the enhanced revenue on a, on a two-year basis, and we'll be coming back for these exciting presentations again.
Other questions? So, you will be, Brad, we do need to pass this recommendation now.
Yeah, you're really dealing with two things, approving the use of the competitive seal proposal method for this procurement and specifically approving this task order for Weston.
All right. Council members, you have this before you. Doesn't look good, Mr. Gore. It's a quiet bunch, absorbing a lot of information.
One more question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Young.
About a $2 a month increase on the water bills.
Yes, sir, versus seven. So, you're reducing the, you're reducing the anticipated monthly water bill, and you're looking at about a 19, or 16% to 19% internal rate of return on the project. So, I don't know, it's, it's a pretty.
I'll take it.
It's a pretty good deal. And it will be coming back to you. This is just to get the ball rolling.
Is there a motion?
May we approve the recommendation of the Water and Sewer Board?
Second.
Mr. Gilli, Mr. Washington, thank you. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Gore.
Thank you very much, sir.
Very well done. This time, we'll consider recommendations of the city manager as to the comprehensive plan update and a classification and compensation study kickoff date. Mr. Lyons.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, members of the city council. I wanted to give you an update on the comprehensive plan project. Staff has met since your last meeting, and we have identified three firms to be interviewed. Those would be Kendon Keast of Sugarland, Texas, Mig of Boulder, Colorado, and Wallace Robertson Todd of Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. We have identified the date of April the 17th to conduct those interviews. We'll conduct those interviews here in the council chambers. They'll certainly be open to the, to the public, in that the interview process would include the staff members that we had shared with you previously, as well as designees of the, the chairs of the Planning Commission, Water and Sewer Board, Parks and Recreation, and the School Board. So, I wanted to announce, and you all asked last time to have a council member participate in those interviews. So, April the 17th, from 8:30 till noon, we'd like to interview those three firms, and I wanted to give you that update, see if you had any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Lyons?
Mayor, we did ask for a council representative for that.
We did. We could do that under board and commission appointments, I guess. All right, but go ahead. I did not hear from any of you that you would prefer to do that, and so I took it upon myself to say that I would sit in on that. And with your approval, I will do that. Or if you would rather someone else do it, I'd be happy to entertain a motion that somebody else sits in on the consultant evaluation committee.
Do you want a motion? Do we accept the mayor's recommendation that he serve on that board?
Second.
Yep. Thank you. Mr. Young, Mr. McFarland, this is, allow the mayor to sit in on this consultant evaluation committee. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Thank you.
Okay. One more item, Mayor. It's your last meeting. Council awarded a contract to MAG to conduct the classification and compensation study. In order to kick that project off, we'd like to have Carolyn Long of MAG come and have a workshop with city council. At this point in time, they won't have any data or recommendations, but really, this will be a good introduction to the process where they can come. You all could sit down with Ms. Long, and she can walk through her approach to the project. The HR department is already beginning to, you know, build this, there's a lot of data that they're going to need. So, in the meanwhile, we're trying to get some of that background information and data, but would like to recommend to you a council workshop on Thursday, April 24th, from 5:00 p.m. to 6:30. And we would not anticipate any action or decisions at council at that workshop. This is really for your information to help introduce you all to the project.
We could possibly have some new council members by then.
It could be a public meeting that could come.
In fact, Mayor, we were going to suggest that we hold this workshop here in the council chambers because we may have, if there's new council members that would like to attend, if we have city employees that would like to attend, they certainly would be welcome. We think this room may be more comfortable. So, we'd like to do the workshop here for that presentation and overview. It would be Thursday, April 24th, at 5:00 p.m. in the council chambers.
What time you say, 5:00?
5:00 p.m., yes, ma'am.
Do you want a motion to that?
Yeah, there's no need to be a motion to set that for advertising, or is it just a recommendation to what action we need to take?
Ms. Michauda, I've already shared that date with her, and she would include this in the advertisement of the meetings for the month of April.
So, you don't need any action from us to solidify, just for attention, which is your, let me look at legal and ask what she prefers.
If, if the council members aren't going to be able to come or don't want that time, now would be the time to speak up.
Okay. So, all you're needing to know is if that date works for us as opposed to formal action, setting a meeting, correct?
And once again, no decisions for you all. This is really an informational session.
We can come anyway for an outlet.
Well, your terms now overdosed, May 1st anyway, I don't think.
All right. It's April 24th at 5:00 p.m. for a workshop regarding the classification and compensation study. Is that all right? Hearing none.
Okay. Thank you.
There you go. Thank you. Beer permits, Ms. Wright.
None tonight, Mayor.
No beer permits. You have a list of the bills to, statements to be considered for payment. Are there any questions regarding any of the bills?
Maybe we pay the bills.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. McFarland. Mr. Young, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. I don't have any further board and commission appointments. Other business from staff or the council?
Assistant Chief Jernigan has an item.
Chief Jernigan.
City staff. This is on other business because it was not ready at the time the agenda went out. So, I had to put it on other business. I am requesting approval, or MFRD is requesting approval to purchase technical rescue equipment for our heavy rescues. Item A is from a single-source provider. It is, item A is recommended that city council approve. It is, item A is recommended that city council approve MFRD to purchase technical rescue equipment for the heavy rescue vehicles from the single-source provider, EVS Mid-South. MFRD needs to purchase a confined space communication system for our Rescue 7. Adding this equipment to Rescue 7 will make it identical then to Rescue 9. The total for this technical rescue equipment is $15,626.13. It is recommended that city council approve MFRD to waive the competitive bid process and purchase a Savex confined space rescue communication system from EVS Mid-South. You want me to go ahead with item B and do it all at the same time? Okay. Item, item B is approval to purchase technical rescue equipment for heavy rescues from GSA. It is recommended that city council approve MFRD to purchase technical rescue equipment for the heavy rescue vehicles from the federal GSA contract. This portion of equipment includes two kits for rescues, for the rescues that are used for repelling during rescues and confined space equipment for Rescue 7. The total for this equipment is $68,028.30. It is recommended that city council approve MFRD to purchase technical rescue equipment at the price established under the federal GSA contract with Paratec and Scott Safety and to waive the competitive bid process. And I'd be glad to read all of that, but I assume you just wanted me to read parts of it this time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Are there any questions regarding this approval to either purchase a technical rescue equipment or for, from the GSA or from a single-source provider? I think that's the questions before us. Any questions? Mr. Lyons, was this in the budget? I mean, were we anticipating this cost?
We had budgeted the equipment for the vehicles, and as fire and rescue has gone through and ordered items, I think they saw, they wanted to have the rescues outfitted the same way across the board, so it is within our allocation for the CIP equipment.
Okay.
If no further question, I move for approval.
I'll second her motion.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Harris and Mr. Gilli. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Any other business?
Mayor.
Mr. McFarland.
Mayor, I've been working with Mr. Lyons and Ms. McGannon for some time, but I serve on the pension committee as the council representative and had, had the request over the last while that our ordinance specifies that we have two employees that sit on that committee, and the two employees that we have are Mr. Lyons and Ms. Wright, who do a phenomenal job. But I want to propose and have worked with Ms. McGannon to add that to a third employee that would be not a charter-appointed position or a department head, but an employee that would want to serve on that commission at large to, and I don't want to say represent the employees, but it would just be an employee that would be on there, and that would be handled through the regular appointment, like applications. Mayor appoint that position with council confirmation. So, that's what I'd like to request from the council, that Ms. McGannon could prepare that ordinance.
All right. Council members, you have this recommendation from Mr. McFarland for you, any questions of Mr. McFarland or city staff regarding...
Is this a motion? Does a motion need to be made for this, Ms. McGannon? Or is it just...
I think you need to study it first, then just get the ordinance, and then...
I think the thought was to get some productive discussion because if no one thought it would be a good idea, it would save staff time, but you may want to embellish or ask for alternatives to the suggestion if you have a different point of view. Otherwise, I'll just go ahead and prepare it as Mr. McFarland has suggested.
Did you have a, a term involved, I mean, in mind?
We talked about just being the same as everybody else. The, one thing it does, and we did talk about it, it will make an even number of members on the pension committee, but...
Well, and as on the pension committee, we handle allocations of funding. We don't handle necessarily, everything else that has to do with the pension will come to the city council for decisions, so we're really just talking about allocations of funding and keeping everyone informed of what's going on with, you know, with their, their pension. So, I, I can't speak for Ms. Wright or, or Mr. Lyons, but the pension committee meetings are not very contentious, contentious meetings, so it's not...
You have a good chairman.
Yes, that's exactly it. So...
I think it's an excellent idea. The more we involve employees on all aspects of our business, the better.
Well, that's what I was thinking, if you had a shorter term, you'd get more employees. So, if you had, you're not meeting, but what, two, three times a year?
No, we, we're scheduled to meet monthly, but we cancel, there's...
In practice, it's more quarterly. We talked about making that official, but decided that it would be better to leave it and then cancel for lack of business. I mean, I think it's three years, I believe, for everyone's term. The possibility would be to have a one-year term for employees so that they rotated more.
Sure.
It's whatever the council wishes.
Yeah. One-year term... Doesn't mean you can't reappoint, but I'm just thinking that you, you obviously have a large number of employees, and there might be a number of people who might like to at least be a part of that, and you have a shorter term, that would give you more options.
Sure.
I appreciate Shane bringing this up tonight. It's a good thing, and I, I think the mayor's right as well, the shorter term, the more employees we can involve over the years to come, probably the better.
Well, a little help with transparency too, and trust, educating employees like we're working.
It's a lot of responsibility.
Well, we get, you know, the reports that we get and the flash reports, when you read through them, there's a lot of good information in there, and it, you know, shows exactly where, where our pensions stand, so it's, you know, if anything, I think it's just good to have that, that information available.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the area we get a lot of questions individually on, so I think that's an excellent idea to pull the employees in.
Not that we, the two employees that we have on the commission are not doing a great job. They, they are doing a great job, but...
Always blushing, can you imagine?
Yeah.
All right. Do you think you have enough information?
I do.
Then?
Thank you, Ms. McGannon.
Certainly.
And Mr. Lyons has been very helpful in working through this.
Great, good idea.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Smotherman?
We, it's always nice to compliment, I think, what makes our city great, and this past weekend, last Saturday, we had the special kids run here in town, and I know I saw a couple faces out there, and certainly with 2,000 to 3,000 people that we had participate, I think it shows the caring and loving community that we live in. So, I just want to say thank you and compliment everybody who participated.
All right. Thank you. Anything else? If not, you're adjourned.